Caring for the proposed amendments to the Calis zoning. I appreciate you all coming out and sharing with us your thoughts. I want to thank Orca for being here to record this meeting. Donna Fitch has graciously accepted to take notes so that we on the Planning Commission can listen with our ears wide open. Annie Oakley had both eyes open, we got her both ears open. The agenda, let's just start by introducing the Planning Commission.
Hi, I'm Melanie Keane, I'm in Adamant, I've been on the Planning Commission for a few years.
John McCullough, I live right in Ken's corner.
And I'm Jan Olson, and then missing is Gary Root, who normally comes, sometimes a little late with some goodies, so we'll go ahead and still hope for that. About the Planning Commission, Melanie brings information relative to keep us, relative to state statute. Gary brings a perspective of institutional history, he's been on the longest. John's specialty basically is the information that he provides us from years of being on zoning administrator, and the issues that have come from that, as well as, he does a lot of our map work, and I consider him our map guru. I also wanted to share with those of you who were not here before that how the Planning Commission works pretty much is by consensus. We will, we do work on writing standards or writing these regulations, we have it up on this little thing up here, we work together on what is it that we want to say, how do we want to say it? And so basically, you've got a consensus here as to what the language is. The next thing I wanted to mention before we get going is the process of approving amendments to write for these regulations. We do have to meet state statute, and so this Planning Commission is required, and it has a warning, and with that warning was a set of language that was put out. Tonight, the opportunity is here for you all to comment on it, we are, we will take notes, we've already heard some comments from a group of people. After this meeting, the Planning Commission will meet however long it takes to restructure or rewrite some of this, if there is going to be a rewriting, which there probably undoubtedly will be. We must write notes documenting the changes that we made, those, the new regulations will get printed, the notes will get printed, those will go to state, and then it goes to the Select Board. Now, the Select Board has to have their own public hearing. Once the final, or what we dub "final," goes to the Select Board, they have an opportunity to make changes, but they have to also let the Planning Commission know if it's of substance, and any changes have to be made. If there's no changes made in substance, the Planning Commission, or the Select Board then calls for a public hearing, they have to follow the same warning procedure, everything has to go out to the abutting towns, and it has to follow through that procedure. Once the Planning, the Select Board meets and approves this language, then it goes to vote, and then it will be called on a ballot, and the whole town votes on it. So those are the processes that we follow, that we'll be following to get this approved. What we're going to do tonight, we've got a few PowerPoints to go through, possibly a few maps, to kind of lay the groundwork of what we've done, and then we're going to open it up, and what I would like for each of you to do when you speak is give your name, where you live, and then make your comment, kind of like a town meeting, you know, and so that we can hear it and have it be distinct. Okay, you ready, John? John, by the way, did the, oh, with the PowerPoint, get it going.
Okay.
So, what we're going to be talking about, we toned in first on water quality, and we decided in reviewing maps and everything, that we thought the Shoreland District, the way it is today, provided or has several parcels that are quote-unquote "in Shoreland" but actually have no shoreline. So there are several parcels that are in a Shoreland District that are nowhere near the lake, and it's a matter of how that district is designed. We also looked very closely at all, a lot of the current cottages and current dwellings that are along the edges of the lake, a lot of them are in the buffer, many of the parcels are non-conforming, they don't meet the three-acre standard of the Shoreland District at all. So we have non-conforming lots, and we probably have quite a few non-conforming buildings. On looking at the dimensional standards of the Shoreland District, and looking at the dimensional standards of the, and we're going to have a slide, then we'll kind of go through that a little bit more, the, looking at the dimensional standards of Shoreland and comparing it to the dimensional standards of rural residential, they are almost identical. And so our thought was, well, if we really want to concentrate on what happens around the lake, then maybe let's just have an overlay that absolutely concentrates on what there is around the lake, and how it helps with the water quality. The last thing to mention is that we've had quite a few people who live on the lake area that voiced a concern of having totally different standards compared to the state. And so our goal also was to have more alignment with the state, so that there wouldn't be as big a discrepancy with what the State Shoreland Protection Act was and what we had. The other thing that we have added is erosion and stormwater control measure, which is in Section 3.15. In doing our research relative to buffers, what was, came across from us, or to us from the state, was the greatest importance was preventing erosion. And so we have, in this, there is a whole new section on erosion control and stormwater management that will apply to all districts, not just Shoreland. On flood hazard and river corridor, the next big item, which is marked or highlighted, river corridor, we're adding a whole new overlay. Now, this is important for a variety of reasons. There's this thing called an Emergency Relief and Assistance Fund, we call it ERAF. And when a federal disaster is called, the federal government provides assistance. And what happens is, the state can also provide assistance, and they contribute anywhere up to 7.5 percent, the state could provide 12 percent, and the state goes up to providing 17.5 percent. So what happens is, the town is responsible for providing less money with the more money that comes from the state, so it becomes a financial goal, or an asset, if you will, to reach the 17.5 percent level. Calis is currently at 12 percent. When we add a river corridor overlay, we bring it up to 17.5 percent, and that's why we are adding the river corridor overlay. Not only for that, but also to protect the river corridor, and in that, there's no new development allowed in the river corridor. And also, there's some stricter measures about what you can do in the river corridor. In addition, and we'll show you that on some of the maps that come up, putting part of river corridor are streams that are, what, .5 to 2.5 square foot in volume?
Miles.
Huh?
Square miles.
Square miles, okay, whatever, in drainage as it goes down. Those are also considered river corridor, that are, and we have to map them, and there's a 50-foot buffer on each side of that river corridor. So it's, it's actually, almost, I think, as important in many ways as what there is with the Schrod. Okay, John, let's go on, oh, no. Historic district, we changed some things relative to the Design Advisory Board. There's a new project registration form that we created that would be working, would be useful for certain things in the Design Advisory Board. A waiver, which is not as strenuous as giving a variance that the DRB can use, and also a whole new set of definitions. We put all definitions in one chapter. The way our book reads now is you've got definitions in 5.4, and you've got definitions over in 3. something else, so definitions are kind of all over the place in the current regs. What we decided to do is to put all definitions in one section, separating out what was flood hazard definitions and keeping everything else, and we've added a lot of new definitions, which are highlighted in red. Okay, that's cool. So Shoreland, current Shoreland District only involves these lakes, Curtis, Ten, Ponds, Curtis Pond, Ten Pond, Nelson-Saban, Bliss, and Norah Pond. And these are 20-acre lakes, so they don't meet the lake state. With the Schrod, with the overlay, we add Little Mud Pond, Adamant Pond, Hawkins Pond, and Sodom Pond. Is that what it says on there? Anyway, so those are 10 acre lakes. The biggest change is in this Adamant Lake. Adamant Pond currently is not in Shoreland, so when we, when we add Adamant, they become part of the Shoreland Overlay District, and in doing that, they, the folks in Adamant said they were willing to reduce their village and have a higher, and have rural residential. I guess I talked for that. So, let's look at what's existing right now. Right now, in the current Shoreland, in your Shoreland District, you have a 50-foot buffer, you have 150-foot development. This buffer, it's a 50, it's a buffer of 50 feet, vegetation buffer. The setback is there, and you have an 800-foot total depth. You have a three-acre minimum parcel size, there is no maximum clearing, there is a 10 percent maximum lot coverage in terms of impervious surface. That's the dimensions and what's in the Shoreland Protection District. Now, when you go to the overlay, the state has a 100-foot vegetative buffer, so we're increasing the buffer by 50 feet. The upland zone or of this is 150 feet, so it's kind of an expansion, if you will, from this 150-foot to a 250-foot over here. So it's a 250-foot total depth. The parcel size is what the underlying district is. If the underlying district is rural residential, it's three acres, it's got the same setback. And by the way, both of these have a 300-foot, a 300-foot shoreline, what, what am I thinking about? Yeah, they have 300 feet of shoreline requirement. And right now, we have, the proposal is to have a 20 percent impervious surface in the overlay. Okay, go on. Another way of looking at this is to look at what, look at Bliss Pond, Larry, is it familiar? So what you see here is this little tiny green is the 50-foot buffer, this is your 150-foot setback, here's your 800-foot depth, and then there's, all of this is three acres parcel size, but it could also be a three-acre rural residential. No maximum clearing allowed, and you have a 20 percent impervious surface. No, it's tan, we forgot to change that.
It's tan.
It's all right. We're all human. The proposed Schrod, this is a picture of the proposed Schrod, so you've got your 100-foot vegetation buffer, the 150-foot setback goes to here. The parcel size is based what's underneath rural residential in this case, and in this is a 40 percent clearing maximum and a 20 percent maximum impervious surface. So that's what we have relative to the Schrod. We're calling it the Schrod because Shoreland overlays, yeah. Okay, where do we go from here?
The next slide's River Corridor 1.
Okay, let's just go straight to River Corridor.
Or I could go to the PDF.
Go to the PDF, I think it's better.
Any place you want to look at?
Oh, this is the PDF. This is an overall graphic representation of our existing, right now, our existing zoning is here. Looks pretty convoluted, but here's Curtis, here's all of these non-conforming parcels, you've got some big parcels over here, you've got, this parcel, like here, doesn't really have any shoreline, nor does this. So you've got a lot of people that don't have shoreline that are in Shoreland. Can we get to, is there any other lake you want to show on this one? This is Curtis Pond, the way it is now. Now, let's, let's do the proposed. So if we take this off, now, this is what's proposed. So here's our buffer, here's our 150-foot limit, now, on the east side, we have made it 800, a 700-foot.
Upland zone?
Huh?
Upland zone.
Upland zone, yeah, sorry. And at the request of some of the people who like some streams of conservation. So we could also take this, go to Adamant, can you show Adamant?
Yeah, I just want to do something real quick, the, you can see here that when we took Shoreland out, instead of having the village, which is the yellow, move in, rural residential wraps around Curtis. The only place village comes closest is at the southern end, but so this area here is...
So this hatch mark, this is rural residential, keeping with the three acres. Here's your village, so you've got some parcels that are both village and rural residential. But you go down here where everything is village, this is the southern end, and the water flows down that way, and so even though, yeah, there is some, we want to protect here, but this, this is the village center where, where this is.
John, could you show farther north on the comment page?
Oops, sorry. Maybe, maybe I can. If I can figure out how to use this mouse.
Almost would be easier than entering.
Well, if I set it so that I can scroll and zoom, then peoning becomes a problem.
Yeah, so the northern part is here of the lake. So we still have your three-acre minimum rural residential, and you've got your 100-foot buffer and your 250-foot overlay, upland. So that's the northern end.
And so what you're saying, the purple, there is no development in, or I'm not quite sure what to be done?
In rural residential.
It has a tighter impervious surface standard than the underlying district, there are a couple of uses that are a little different, not much. You've got the three-acre minimum in, which is the more stringent lot size standard, but that Shoreland District had the three-acre minimum anyway, so that's really not, that's not a change. So it's, I'd be hard pressed to say what the, what the difference is between this and what we have now, except for the 100-foot vegetative buffer.
Does anybody else want to see the Adamant or any of the other lakes in the area and how it's affected, or are you, are you okay with moving on? Adamant did have some very unique things that were proposing, they had their original village up here.
Village used to go all the way up to the quarry.
Yeah, and then after meeting with them, they were willing to move their village down to here and make everything rural residential around it. Again, the village is here, the designated village center is there, so we are keeping village with village. And again, the water flow, in looking at all of this, was the water flow mostly goes out this way. Sodom Pond was added, so all of those issues around Sodom Pond has been added.
A question, modern screening, rural residential, that just means you have to have three acres, is that kind of what it is?
I'm sorry.
Yes, three-acre minimum rural residential.
That's kind of like differentiating from like the village.
Oh, village, yeah, village has unlimited, they don't have any acreage requirement. Rural residential has a three-acre minimum. And the, the whole point of it, from the state planning perspective, is with your village, is where you want your concentrated economic development. And so when you apply for some grants and you are in the village district and you happen to be also a nonprofit, and you can get grants, this is, this is where the, the center of development is in the planning.
At, at number 10 Pond, the, when we take Shoreland out, the district that moves in to take its place is, you can see the yellow area, that is village, and it goes all the way to the point where Memorial Hall is. This was a request from the people in North Calis because they were going for some stuff, village center designation, and they wanted the village district to go, to actually go up and have the hall in the zoned village district. I think it also...
So this became the village district for the North Calis area?
But the more stringent requirements would apply as far as environmental stuff, so they still have the Shoreland District, the vegetative buffer, and the, and the space with limited development and clearing. Okay.
So that's about it for the Shoreland. I'm gonna like, we'll look at River Corridor, seeing those, some of those maps, and then we're gonna let you talk. I think what I wanted to do was share with you some of the things that the Planning Commission has to look at, in looking at the town, in the entire town, relative to economic development, where you want that development, and yet, how do you keep and protect the topography and the water quality that we have, which is immense in the town of, of Calis. The river corridor, I don't know how well you can see this, but all of these gold lines are river corridor. So you can see, river corridor comes all the way around, around your pier. Now, river corridor automatically has a 50-foot buffer on each side, and, and this is an idea, or a drawing of what a river corridor has. It has to follow the meandering of the river, and it has this on, around each side, so that it just automatically is 50 feet on each side. Reduces the bank erosion, slows the flow, and twice to keep it in a straightened channel. Can you go back to the map again? Now, these little red things here, this is the .5 to 2.5 square mile streams that are also part of River Corridor, and those also have a 50-foot buffer, meaning no development in those 50 feet. What we've proposed, though, is that 35 feet of that 50 feet is to be vegetated, right? Did we get that right? Would be vegetated buffer, and therein starts some of the discussion about mowing up to the 35-foot mark. So that's just a very brief map of, of River Corridor, and I think it shows you the extent of everything that is there and how it affects all of Calis, it's not just around the lakes. Our, what we have with River Corridor affects much more in the land. Is there anything else that we have? I can't remember.
I wonder what happened to my map?
Do we have another slide, or were we done?
No, that's it for slides.
Okay, and do we have any other maps? Or we can be ready to have maps if there's some questions.
There's this, I mean, the river corridor stuff is all available to see on the, the web, town interactive web map, which is what you see on your screen, whoops.
No, we don't have the interactive map yet. All right, so now we're here, and we've got our ears open, and we'll take notes, and you, if you have something to say, it is being recorded, state your name, where you live, and either you have questions or have comments.
I just wanted to ask about existing structures, that's all grandfathered, I'm assuming, you know, you said we had none, they are non-conforming. I just hope if you could speak to the existing structures and stuff.
Existing structures in River Corridor or in the Schrod?
I, I mean, on the shoreline.
On the Shoreland, okay. I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question, so it's...
I just wanted to speak, if you, like, can we compare items, sheds or something that are on the shoreline? Is that grandfathered? Or do we, do you care about that?
Do you understand the question? I still am not getting it.
I think I do. Right now, the minimum standard for new development, if you're within, within 100 feet of the water, there's no new development. If you go all the way to the edge of Schrod, 250 feet from the water's edge, we are, we are still having a conversation sort of about what should be allowed. It had been that, had been considered that an addition on the, on the back of a building away from the pond didn't increase the level of noncompliance, but we've heard a lot that says any new impervious surface is, is something that has to be controlled. So there, there are some folks who'd like to see no expansions of existing noncompliant structures if they're within the, the proposed Schrod.
And for sure, in the buffer, the noncompliant, it has to stay within the footprint, and you can't enlarge, I mean, there, that's what we're thinking about. So, you know, and for sure, there's also a noncompliant standard that's not part of the Schrod. of the shrod that the DRB has to look at, and that non-compliance, you can't make it larger. So it, the people that are, have their dwellings and their cottages that are in the buffer, both the shoreline, and also people that have dwellings that are already in the River There's, there's, there's definitely, it's going to affect those people living in those dwellings.
As far as not making over.
Or any closer to the shoreline in the current draft. Yeah, yeah. But look that over and let us have your comments on it.
But putting new law on a existing thing is not...
She's talking about maintaining, I think.
You can maintain.
Oh, sure.
And you can repair.
The, the regulation really is intended to curtail an increase in impervious surface. So anything that you do that maintains it is...
Is fine.
Is fine, that's, that's permitted. But anything that would, that would increase the exposure of impervious surface has, has to be reviewed in a, in a way that will decrease its impact on, on those close by waters.
And by the way, this is Gary Root, the fourth member of the Planning Commission.
Sorry I was late. I'm particularly sorry, I didn't bring any cookies. Please.
Oh.
Me too.
Yeah, normally Gary brings the sweet stuff to keep us going.
Running late and I came straight here.
Yeah, that's awesome, we'd rather have you here. Okay, no sugar is allowed. Okay, anybody else?
Sarah.
Sarah.
Sarah Gallagher. I live on the north, random road, north side of Currit Pond. And my concern is, through index of proposed Callis regulations, the deleted exemption for extraction of materials associated with agricultural or forestry operations. Our, our land is undeveloped on north end of Currit Pond, and we can afford to do that because it's in a land use forestry management plan. And so we're concerned if you're gonna make it so that we can't follow the forestry plan that we need to follow in order to do the land use.
That exemption was part of, what section was that?
Four point four.
Four point four. And it's our, it's the section that relates to overall extraction. The reason, the reason why we got rid of that exemption was because of what happened north on, north on fourteen, where a farm purchased the property and has totally denuded the property by saying that it was for his agricultural purposes. Well, maybe it was, but there are certain things there that I, it was, the former DRB chair was pretty upset by it because they could not do anything because of that exemption. Now, as a town, it's like, yeah, I mean, I, I, I'm good, but the farm isn't there. They specifically purchased this land, it's an empty land, they are not farming that land. If they were, it might be different. They trucked that sand all the way down to their farm. And I am a little sensitive to it because they did the same thing with the property across from where I live. That property was given two times, they could excavate thirty-five hundred something or another cubic feet of sand per year for two years only. They were supposed to regrow it or redo something with it, and they have never done it. So we just have this thing with a bunch of sand and trees falling. So I think that's one reason, a little bit personal maybe, and I don't mean to be personal about that, but that was the reason for the exemption. It's...
Okay, so it's, I mean, I understand that something unfortunate occurred, but we may not be the only people who have, you know, it's also possible to responsibly manage forests and not damage the environment. And so you can't make a townwide regulation based on one man actor, essentially, is I guess.
Well, forestry, silviculture, silviculture anyway.
But forest, forest and silviculture and regular agriculture are exempted. What's going on with that was, we said you cannot excavate, you can't, you can't get a, the, the issue is the excavation of the sand.
You're saying, when you're saying agriculture and forest, you're actually meaning mining?
Yeah, it's in the excavation section.
It should say mining then, instead of forestry use.
I don't know if it says forestry.
I mean, it's...
We'll look at it.
Anyway, anyway, the same two hundred and fifty feet, which would be the, the shrod overlay, that is also the State Shoreland Protection Act, and I'm not sure how the state, the state says that the town has to exempt certain ag and silviculture practices.
And forestry in accordance with the forest management...
Yes, exactly.
Exactly, right.
Exactly, as long as it meets certain conditions.
Here, here's a state approved forest management plan.
Yes.
That you, you should be allowed to, I mean, it should be exempted.
No, I agree.
It is, it is exempted.
I do not know how the State Shoreland Protection Act relates to that, though. The, the State Shoreland Protection Act probably wouldn't allow cutting within a hundred feet of the water.
Right, that's fine, but it's not bigger than that.
Yeah.
Long as it's not interfering with our ability to...
And then the, the two hundred, the remaining one fifty from that, from the vegetative buffer to the extent of the shrod, that's forty percent, then, then from two hundred and fifty up, clear cut it. Really, I mean, it's rural residential, and you could, there's no, there's no maximum.
Right, but you're in current use, so therefore, you, you're following the principles of forest, silvemanagement and agriculture, so you're protected.
But, but the shrod that we're proposing isn't, isn't increasing...
So how close to the shoreline can we cut a tree down?
No closer than a hundred feet. After that, you, you just can't. Unless, unless it's, unless it's on its way out, then there's, there's all these standards about how to identify a dead and downed tree.
Uh, what about road building?
No roads.
Well, sometimes you have to get in.
Oh, like a logging road?
Yeah.
God, I suppose if you followed the, the silviculture standards. Again, I would talk to the state about that. Both the, both the town regs and the state are gonna, are gonna remain in effect. People are gonna have to get permits for both. You're gonna have to get a permit from the State Shoreland Protection Act, folks, and you're gonna have to get one from the town. Until at some point, the state delegates responsibility for the, to the town to manage the State Shoreland Protection Act, but I don't see that happening. Only a couple of towns in the whole state have gotten that, been delegated that responsibility. The state's not giving it up.
Anybody else?
Bill, yeah? Right up the road. What about where you have open land on the, on a lake or on, on a river, the beach that you mow or whatever, and that's, can you still be able to do that?
I think on the shoreline, there's mowing of lawns.
Yes.
And then there's on the stream levels in three point one, whatever it is, we talk about brush hogging and mowing, you know, that goes up to a stream. So I think what we have currently proposed, help me out here, was that mowing... Were you talking about a stream or a pond, or you want to know about both?
Both.
Okay. I think what we have for the...
Where would I find that?
Okay, shoreline is gonna be in section, what is that table, two point four? Two point four, and...
Bill, I'll send it to you.
Okay.
And it's G eight. Lawns within the shoreline buffer zone, legally in existence on January third, two thousand and five, that's the current date, our current zoning. Which are mowed at least once every two years, may be maintained if no new development takes place. This is in the current draft. However, the area mowed shall not be expanded into the buffer, and failure to mow at least once every two years shall mean that provisions of this section apply, the thou shalt not mow, general rule, apply, and the area may no longer be mowed. We also have had comments to phase that out. So those are, it's good to get input about what people want for the town.
Yeah, I remember a meeting, was it a year or two ago, three years ago, when we discussed it, and somebody, they wanted it for one year, and I said, well, that doesn't work if you're away for a year, and people don't come off their cans, so...
We heard that.
Yeah, and I thank you for putting it in.
Now, on the...
I think taking that right away from people is, is a, is a retaining, so I would not be a neighbor of that.
Okay. And then the mowing for the, under three point one four, I don't, I don't have what we changed it to, but the, we no longer call it grandfathering, we call it pre-existing. I don't think it was ever called that in the zoning, but it's like a nickname for it, that can be offensive. All right, so now we're shifting to the buffers and requirements of three point fourteen A, or B, buffer requirements, exceptions. So the general rule, except as provided below, any new development shall be prohibited in buffers as established in accordance with this section. And this is the section that talks about riparian buffers, thirty-five feet on each side, wetland buffers, like any surface water buffer that's not a lake or pond or shoreline. So sure. This includes new mowing, clearing, filling, grading, or storage of material. So general rule is you can't do it. Scrolling down to B three, pre-existing mowing, oh, shoot, excuse me. A landowner who has mowed in a buffer of surface water other than wetlands, because we can't touch wetlands, that's a state thing, other than wetlands within, and it has two crossed out and five filled in, is that what we were proposing, I guess? Of the effective date of these regulations, January one, twenty fifteen, I guess that's when the, the surface water buffers were adopted, may continue to mow the same area following adoption of this bylaw. However, the area mowed shall not be expanded, and failure to mow at least once every five years shall mean that provisions of this section apply, the area may no longer be mowed. That's what we have in our current draft.
I guess why wouldn't they both use that? Isn't water, water, I mean, five years of all of it.
Well, it could be the same for two years.
We were really trying to, to address, in, in the one case, we were trying to address lawns, and in the other case, we were trying to address fields. And one of the things that we discussed is that what we, I mean, for people who want to maintain a field and not, and not lose their view, we really would prefer that they mow less rather than more.
Right, because a brush hogging would be five years worth every year.
And, you know, if somebody, if somebody wants to send a tractor out there and brush hog it once every five years so that they maintain their view...
We're gonna change it to two, we have it at five now.
What's gonna be left behind is much better as a, as a water protective buffer than if it's mowed like a lawn.
I agree.
So that's, I mean, you know, how do you, how do you juggle those two things together and still have them make sense? And that's, that's very important.
And our current regulations call for five years, and when we were doing this, at first we thought, well, let's, let's do it two years, and then we realized, well, yeah, but you don't want to promote mowing every two years, so we went back to five years. So... And then the other issue is, is it's also bad for water quality to mow, so at some point, do we phase that out? Do we, you know, like, at what point do we, the point of a pre-existing provision is to prevent unfairness of surprising new regulations on people who didn't know they were coming. These have been around a while. So we've been hearing from others that maybe we just phase that out after a few years. So it's good to get input on all sides on these issues, figure out what's best for the town. Anything else? Anybody else?
If everybody else has, and they're, they're saying, maybe I can go up for a...
Yeah, I mean, yes.
Okay. Hi, my name is Larry Bush, I live on Bliss Pond. I'm the vice chair of the Conservation Commission in Callis. The chair is Stephanie Kaplan, and she couldn't be here tonight and apologized to us for that. The other members of the commission currently are Julie Hand, Neil Maker, Mark Brown, and Tracy Coolidge. We've given the Planning Commission tonight, today, a set of comments about the shoreline zoning provisions in this overall package. Doesn't address the flood hazard or the erosion sections. There are copies, there may still be copies up here on that table, I didn't, I haven't been to bring, so the comments will also be put online, probably at the Conservation Commission's page on the town website. That'll take a couple of days. A few comments, I would like to, to make this short, rather than going through these, because our document has fifteen numbered paragraphs of specific comments, and I'd like to avoid that. If, if the understanding is that this is submitted to the Planning Commission and will be taken into account in the same way as if it were read verbatim, I mean, I think we would all prefer that not, let it not happen.
That sounds reasonable to me. Maybe the Planning Commission objected it? Yeah, no.
Okay, I'll just make a, a couple of points about these, these, these fifteen paragraphs. First of all, we have a friendly disagreement with the Planning Commission, and we think that it should continue to be a shoreline district. There's potential for confusion and difficulties with inconsistency between the underlying district and the shoreline district. Beyond that, it's kind of a philosophical question. We think shorelands are very important, natural environments, and there has been a, a shoreline, a district, a full district, and we think it should stay. We also believe that the shoreline district, which is, is now a maximum of eight hundred feet under the state law and the proposal of the Planning Commission, that is under two hundred and fifty feet, which is the hundred foot buffer that everyone now agrees on, and then the extra space behind that. The Conservation Commission is, is urging that the standard be five hundred feet instead of eight hundred feet, because there is some pretty good scientific indications that five hundred feet is not only a depth that will protect a lot of the wildlife that live on the, the edges of the ponds, but even more importantly, perhaps in many ways, because of our obligation, both to the town and to the state, to maintain water quality, the five hundred foot depth permits the best form of filtration and protection. And if, if you're interested, this is a document on the back of our proposals, which is an attachment to it. It was prepared by the state, and it's tall but width, so, sure, lake shore vegetation for lake protection, and it has a list of things and how, how much land away from the pond needs to be undisturbed in order to provide the, the protection for mammals, birds, and so forth, but also for water quality standards, like nutrient removal and static filtration. And this also will be on our, on the website with our proposals.
Who prepared this?
Um, it was done by the, hold on a second.
Yeah, I didn't see who had done it either.
It's the, it's the A and R, and I believe they.
Vermont A and R?
Pardon? Yeah, I, it's on here somewhere, I'm just not seeing it. But it's, it's done by the state, it's available on their website.
On the, on the D E C, the Vermont, that, hold on a second.
Yeah.
D E C is?
Department of Environmental Conservation, which is part of A and R.
Little thing under.
Okay, so there are those two points. We urge that it remain a district, we urge that the, that the width of it be of five hundred feet rather than the current eight hundred or the proposed two fifties. There was a little discussion earlier about the interplay between the state regulatory process and the town regulatory process. We, we urge very strongly that it be clear in the, in the current, in the proposed or in any new zoning regulations, that both the Vermont Shoreland Protection Act and the Callas zoning regulations apply. And the regulatory review process at both levels be maintained. Why is that important? Well, for one thing, the state standards and the town standards will likely diverge on a number of points. And the state doesn't care what the town's standards are, if ours are stricter. So the only enforcement mechanism that we currently have is through the zoning administrator and the DRB, and we're proposing that that level stay. So there's the substantive differences that argue for maintaining the existing Callas-level supervision and regulation. There's also, and this is not something I think a whole lot of people think about a lot, but it's very important that the public know about things that happen in environmentally sensitive areas. The state process doesn't really permit the kind of public notice that the town's process permits. Under the state's Shoreland Protection Act regulatory system, someone who wants to develop within the shoreline makes an application to an office at the state. The only, the only notice to the rest of the world that anything is happening at that point and thereafter is, the applicant is supposed to file a copy of the application also with the town clerk, but there's no requirement that the town clerk post it or otherwise notify the public about the existence of this application. It's the, the standard says that the town clerk can post it in the town office if he chooses to. It's basically the guidance that the state gives on that. So then the state has this, and there's a thirty-minute, thirty-day period of time when it's, it's sort of like a notice period. And the state is supposed to have a website that you could go to if you were interested in seeing what permits were out there, and it would keep this on that website for thirty days. The, the problem at the moment, the problem could be that I just can't operate a computer, but I'm relatively proficient. And I have tried and tried and tried to find on the state system where those permits are located. And the only place I found it, the, the page wasn't operative. You couldn't actually find any of the permits on it. And that's unlike the permitting system for wastewater and the various other things that the state regulates. So I don't know what's up there, I haven't talked to the state people about this. But the, the idea that the, that the general public has noticed of what's going on is, in our judgment, a loser. Because the only other requirement is that if you get the state's permit, you are required to put it of record in the, in the town. After it's all said and done, you have to put it there if necessary.
So Larry, my understanding is, when the applicant goes to the state, the state does what it is they do, but that applicant also has to go to the permit to the zoning administrator, who has to verify whatever the state does. And that's not changing in these regs. Nothing like that is changing. Everything, so even though I can't see it on the state website, the fact that it's going to John, and it's been approved or whatever, and then whatever, or any future zoning administrator, it's still gonna go to the Callas zoning administrator for a permit.
Right, but the problem, the problem is that the way that these regulations are currently drafted, and I don't know if you know, planned, a number of, of things have, have been included, which make it clear to anybody who's given a fair reading, that for, for many, many subjects, if you get a state permit, that's it. You don't have to comply with anything in Callas.
No, but that's untrue.
No, it's, well, let me.
The, the current, we understood that, and you gave that to us already before, and we said that we would be, would be looking into it. So that's all I'm gonna say now, right now. And could I just have?
I understand, but we, all that we can react to is what's legally, I think, is the written document that was posted with your warning. And I understand that you guys are making changes in it, but, but those aren't formal. And we, we can't respond to any changes you might make in this document. I understand you're telling me that, that things might change, and therefore things in our document.
Mel, Melanie. No, I appreciate that, and, and I think it's good for everybody to hear the concerns to the document we're all looking at tonight, and that's spot on. I did want to just come out, the environmental notice bulletin page on A and R's website has all, the environmental notice bulletin, it's called. You can sign up for an email, which you're not gonna want, because you're gonna get it every week with everybody's permits, but if you just want to go in and scroll, you can type in Callas, it'll pull up every type, or you can type in shoreline, I can show it to you later.
Okay, I'd like to see that, because I did find that a page that had other permits that A and R monitored, there's a whole page full of them, and I looked at some of the Callas ones, but there was, but shoreline was not on that page that I found.
I'll show you later. Bill, do you have a question for Larry?
No, I have something else to say.
Oh, okay, so, okay, we'll let Larry finish. And then I know you want to be next.
Okay, just, just, here's, here's one example, I'll give one of another.
Let's beat it today.
Um, in the shoreline buffer zone standards, which are two point four G, the proposed language says that development within the buffer zone shall be conducted in compliance with the Vermont Shoreland Protection Permit or Approval. In the same sentence, applies to property which is on the other side of a road. The, the significance of that is, under the state's standards, in the state statute, all of the shoreline regulatory provisions that otherwise would apply do not apply if there's a public road that, that separates the pond on one side from the balance of what would otherwise be the shoreline coverage area, the shoreline zone. So I live on Bliss Pond, for instance, everybody knows the whole south side of that pond has a road along it, and the road is probably the biggest contributor to the untrification that we're seeing, where it's becoming a big lily pond. But my point is, the road is maybe twenty-five feet off the pond, it's another thirty feet wide. Some of the good folks who live on the other side of the road are within the hundred-foot buffer zone, except that the state law says, no, you're home free, there is no buffer zone, because there's a road, is there. Now, one of the wonderful things that, that the Planning Commission is doing, and we heartily applaud it, is getting rid of that anomaly. So public roads won't be a barrier to enforcement of environmental regulations that affect the quality of the, of the water in the pond. So basically, what, what this says is there's two situations in this particular provision. One is land that's within the state's jurisdiction, that is, not on, not across the road. And if all of your land, or part of your land is in that, then what this says is that's conducted in compliance with a shoreline, Vermont Shoreland Protection Act permit or approval, period. It goes on to say, if the applicant has property for which a portion of the shoreline overlay area extends beyond the road, the standards listed below shall apply. And there is a list of, you know, very good standards. Our proposal is that that list of standards apply across the board. But the point here is, a fair reading of this says, if you've got something that, that requires a state permit, and you get the state permit, then there's no role for the town, I mean, that's what it says right now. But if you have land that's not covered by the state law and not subject to a state permit, which this new land, which would be on the other side of the roads are, then all of a sudden, there's this very robust list of standards. And, and there are a number of places in this, which I hope will, will be, you know, are being dealt with, that, that make that point over and over again. And there's language that's taken out of the existing standards that makes that point. I can't understand why it was taken out unless, you know, I, I just don't say.
I guess we're here, I guess. Trying to dovetail the state permit system with the, with town, and you're right.
Well, the problem with dovetailing it is that you're replacing the state-level regulation and oversight with, with just, I mean, the town level with the state's level. That's the effect of this language, and so they play.
Thank you for pointing this out to us.
And your, your comments are specific in where they point
Yes.
to that. I appreciate that, thank you. That certainly was not our intention, and, and I appreciate your helping us to focus in on those places.
Okay, all right, I appreciate that very much, and I appreciate you looking at that. If you find any errors or, or problems with it, you know, I'd be grateful if you would let us, let us know. Okay. Well, you know, I'm not gonna go through a whole lot of this. We, we have provisions on, on what should happen if, if the overlay district is, if that concept is, is maintained and the, the idea of a, a full district is rejected. We have comments on, on how changes shouldn't be made to the underlying districts. If it's determined, unless it's determined that they won't have adverse effect on the shoreline zoning provisions and the zoning regulations.
Can you give an example?
Uh, yes, well, I'm not, I'm not sure if this applies, because I'm not sure now where your, your draft is on a requirement, the minimum lot size requirement for the development. But, but there, it's my understanding there is no minimum lot size in village districts. And frankly, the, the only serious concern here probably is in the various village districts. Adamant, North Callas, a little bit of Curtis Pond, which, which, which can be very confusing and difficult to deal with, if you've got very strict shoreline requirements, and you've got under, that overlay district where there's a very strong policy drive, as it should be in a village district, to concentrating development, concentrating buildings. But our concern is that that latter policy and drive could, could potentially undermine the equally, if not in the minds of many of us, the more important concern about maintaining the environmental quality as best we can. Now, I'll just recognize is that existing non-conforming structures aren't really bothering here. What we're, what we're talking about in almost all cases are making changes in those structures that increase the impervious surface or entirely new development that wasn't there and would not be in compliance with these, with these standards. Okay, so.
Larry, if, if I can just address that for a second. We, we actually looked lot by lot at, at all of the, all of the places where changes were going to be made as a result of these new regulations. And the, the places, for instance, north, the North Callas Village, right now, the lot that, there is a lot that comes under the heading of just what you're describing, that is now part of a village district and is also drains into the, into the pond.
Is that Memorial Hall?
That's Memorial Hall. And that's, and that is, and that is nearly the only lot in town that will, that will change and become less regulated as a result of these regulation changes. In other cases, the, the, for instance, Northmont, North, uh, North Callas Village, almost all of it is below the, is below the surface of the pond, mean water level of the pond. And so they, they are still controlled by the, by the waterway, by the stream regulations, but they're below the surface of the pond and within existing regulations. They, in theory, could apply for a variance as a result of that drainage pattern, even with our current and existing stuff. What, what, what really is happening is that because we're increasing the number of ponds, we're also increasing the number of properties that, that are, that affect a waterway. And so we're actually adding restrictive regulations to those properties rather than, because right now, they don't, there are none, and there are a bunch of ponds in town for which that's the case.
Right.
So there are, you know, the, the, there's no, there's no regulations around, well, I'm not gonna. The, the big one, of course, is Adamant, that's not currently, it's not in a shoreline district. And we're, we're trying to add, so we're actually adding regulations to that pond and Sodom Pond that, that currently don't exist. So yes, there are properties that are on those ponds that are upstream of, particularly of Sodom Pond. All of the, all of those properties are upstream of Sodom Pond. But right now, they're not being regulated, so we're adding regulations to those things.
Right, and we appreciate that and support it.
So with the, with the exception of Memorial Hall, really, we're looking at a net increase in stringency all, all across the town with, with, by changing it to an overlay instead of.
Right, our concern is, at this point, is, is with future changes, not, not really what you guys are doing with this overlay, but just because there's an overlay in an underlying district, it's conceivably possible to make changes in the underlying district that either aren't addressed in the shoreline overlay or otherwise, if there isn't otherwise, would be applicable, that are different than they are today, that could, it's hypothetical.
That's, that's true with every, every aspect of these regs.
Well, it's true, the regulations, right, but you need to coordinate the two, is our point.
But any future is to go through the same process that we're doing tonight. Any future change of any of that is gonna go through an iteration and a review, and believe me, this person is not gonna be on the council.
Okay, all right. Very quickly, we're proposing that the existing shoreline district dimensional standards that are in the law currently be maintained. There would be, of course, no clear cutting in the vegetative buffer zone other than what the, the state law, I believe, permits a hundred-square-foot cleared area or a maximum six-foot-wide path to the pond.
Both, actually.
Sorry?
Both, actually.
Right, that's what I said, and the two.
And the cleared area can't be any closer than twenty-five feet from the. feet from the water.
Right. And we're, you know, we're saying, we're good with that, but there shouldn't be any more clear cutting in the buffer zone, because that's the point of the buffer zone, is to have this vegetative
Totally.
Buffer that provides
That's exactly what it is.
In the same area, though, for the upland zone, I think we're probably on the same page that you are in saying that maximum cleared area in the upland zone would be limited to 40% of the, 40%, but we just think it needs to be made very clear that that's 40% of the upland zone itself.
Yes.
If that's the case, we're good.
Yes.
Okay.
And again, you've specifically enumerated that in your comments?
I'm sorry.
In your comments?
Yeah, I've enumerated what I said about what I'm asking for.
Okay, great. Thank you.
I think it's, there's a copy there. I think. I sent you one in the mail, too, that's, no, no.
This is right here. Thanks.
Just a couple more things. Won't make a lot of people in this room, or some people in this room, happy, but we are, as others have done, proposing that there be a phase out of mowing of lawn, except for the cleared areas we just talked about, the hundred square foot and the six-foot path to the lake. That's our proposal.
In which area? In the whole, the whole 250 feet?
In the vegetative buffer, yeah. Obviously, there are
No, there is no mowing in vegetative buffer anyway, right?
Well, they're law, they're mowed down to the pond. But those are currently, under current law, those are certainly legal, they have been legal under your provisions, they would remain legal, with great humility suggesting that they shouldn't be. Okay. There are a number of other small points, but I will try to cover them here, and I would hope that the planning commission would be able to review this, and if you have any questions or concerns or if we've made any mistakes, appreciate letting us know. And for the general public, if there's not a copy, and they seem to be gone, and you want one, we will be getting this on the website as soon as our incredibly talented webmaster for the town gets it done. Okay, I think I'm done.
Thank you.
Thank you. We will be taking these, we will be working with them.
On this conservation commission proposal, I think right now, you're allowed to develop a three acre lot and a shoreline, with 300 feet of pond frontage, but you don't need road frontage. And then this is added that you need 500 feet of road frontage.
I saw that. I saw that. I mean, that's a recommendation that they're making, and we have to look at it.
I think we have 300 feet currently, right? On shore, in shoreline, road frontage, the proposal would be 500? Not in ours, we wouldn't.
I think it's distinction between the shoreline frontage and road frontage.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Right now, I don't think you need road frontage at all, as long as you have 300 feet of pond frontage.
Well, no, in shoreline district, your current shoreline district requires a 300-foot minimum road.
Right.
Road and shore.
And, yes.
I think it's an either or.
There's a 300, hang on, yes, and your shoreline frontage is 300 foot. So that's what you have currently. And I, yeah, so.
Unless you're not on the shoreline.
If you're not on the shoreline, and if you're in shoreline district and you have no shoreline, it doesn't matter, because I don't have 300 foot in my property. And that's the discrepancy that we see with having a district that's got three acres.
And we're proposing to keep the 300-foot shoreline frontage if you're on the shoreline.
If you're on the shoreline, it's 300 feet.
So that wouldn't change.
That's not changing.
Under the
Bill?
As a rebuttal to what was said by the conservation commission, I think what the, what the planning commission has done is fair. I don't agree with some of it, but you know, life goes on. I think it's fair, and I would ask that it just be as easy to read as possible. I've dealt with the state with their shoreline stuff, found it very easy to navigate and understand and go out and figure it out myself. It seems sometimes, though, when it comes to the town, one has to go kiss the ring. And it should not be that way. One should be able to figure it out for themselves and then ask for help. But to have hopes and dreams dashed like what's happening up on David Moly Road is something that we don't want to have happen. We want people to be able to figure it out and say, yeah, I can do it, no, I can't do it. And then ask for help and see what can be done, but that's what I have to say.
Okay, thanks.
Jan, if I could, I apologize. There were two quick other points I wanted to make for you as well as the audience. On the maximum impervious surface, I believe the current regulations are at 10%, and I think your proposal is to go to 20%, 20%, and our point is, our view is that it should remain at the 10%. And also, while we're on the question of things that are 10%, it's our proposal that within the shoreline district, that driveways and development not be permitted on slopes greater than 10%.
10%?
Yeah, that 14% road that they put in next to the pond or Nelson Pond would be Exhibit A. I think the state's already had to go in there and do some work, or the erosion that was occurring on that 14% grade apparently was, and I don't know this for a fact, John, but I'm told that the erosion problem began, it was only a year ago that it was approved. So it's, the concern is, and I don't hear in this document have sites to, you know, scientific support for that, but the concern is that land within the 250 feet or whatever it's going to be of the pond that have slopes greater than 10% shouldn't be developed because it's the runoff from those slopes that's one of the more significant things, obviously whether it's developed or not. And so the question is, how can you slow down that runoff on these streams? And the steeper the slope, the more the runoff might be is a problem. That meaning
There is some truth to that. There's also the concept of how you put your driveway. You don't do it straight. You make a couple curves in the driveway and you put, what are some of the things in the driveway? You could have rain gauges and, yeah, all those other kind of things. So, you know, the idea of saying you can't have something, and these are the kinds of things that we do consider in terms of that. So it's not just the degree of slope, it's what you do when you're developing the driveway, and that's also an educational thing. I don't know, but I mean, I've got a driveway that does a lot of curving, so it's just all part of the discussion that we can have.
That's similar to question mitigation, which is a broader concept that comes through it. When you read this document, you will find that the conservation commission is no big fan of the concept of mitigation, and what that means is you can get around the regulations by cutting a deal off.
That's not so. Mitigation can also, by the way, help in creating, in stopping erosion.
Oh, absolutely.
And so there's a positive aspect of mitigation, and I just want to make sure that we know that there's a positive aspect of mitigation, and it's not all negative.
So would conservation commission like to see the steep slope standard for the entire town, 10%?
No, but
Why not?
Kind of edged out of that. It is our recommendation that for the rest of the town, it'd be 15% instead of 20%.
But only 10% in shoreline?
Because of the sensitivity of the bodies of water that are at the base of those slopes. Now, what nobody goes into is what happens if it's a slope going the other way, you know? But I won't get into that. I'm going to walk to the pond.
Okay. Anybody else have anything? Yeah?
I'm swimming in Adamant and north at Curtis Pond. You know, and I too would like to thank you guys for all the work you put in. This isn't easy, you know? And there's no piece of land that, you know, fits any one of these rules, you know, perfectly. And that is the hard part, I think, of this whole thing. The other thing is, you know, it's getting to sound like, you know, I've got to go to the state, I've got to go to the town for every little thing that I might be doing on a piece of property. And it just seems like it's causing a burden, you know, on everybody. And the part that I don't like is that it may be creating, you know, like, I'm going to go ahead and do it and let them catch me later, because we're, there's going to be so many, so many rules, you know? It's not so many rules, but it's the same rules by different people, you know? And you have to get approval for this and that. But, you know, so that's, you know, and I would like to point out, you know, instead of all these rules, I personally think mitigation is the way to go. I mean, there's a number of ways to fix any one thing. And if we're saying outlawing, you know, everything to begin with, you know, it just makes it, I don't know, it just frustrates, you know, for me as a landowner, but that's all. But I do appreciate all the hard work that you guys are doing, you know? Because everybody wants to make sure the ponds and the rivers are good, so that's why we live in mine.
Thank you.
My name is Noreen Bryan, and I live on Curtis Pond. And I'm speaking tonight for the Callas Lakes and Streams Committee, which is a fairly informal group of people. So I guess hardest in is into wanting to see these lakes and ponds and streams preserved for future generations. And I guess we look at this from a point of view that we need to follow the science in deciding how best to protect these ponds. Many of us, I'm one of them, who have the luxury of living in the shoreline and living in a non-conforming structure right at the edge of the pond, and everything would tell us from science that that's really not good for ponds. And so I think that this committee wants to make sure that we support regulations that do not allow people such as me to further impair the lakes and ponds that we all love so much.
And me too, I'm on that.
And all the members who are on this Lakes and Streams do live in non-conforming structures, we definitely want on the ponds, but we're also feeling aware that we're extraordinarily privileged. And because of that, or lucky, or whatever you want to say, but because of that, we feel, I guess the Lakes and Streams folks feel that we have a responsibility to be sure that we don't do any more harm, and if possible, protect against that. And so we support the provisions based on our best understanding of science that the conservation commission has brought forward for you to look at. And I guess I'll just put a personal note, having grown up on a pond in Connecticut and watching it completely disintegrate into a mass of algae, my heart is in, we don't want that to happen here. And I know no one else does, but I think we need to be careful that we don't let it happen. And so I think those regulations are where you are. And thank you. And I don't think we need to get bigger, we need to figure out how to do the right trade-off. Thank you.
Thank you. John?
I'm Rosen Blue. I have, I've redetted, but I think I have 500 foot or more frontage on what I call Curtis Swamp, which is not even on the map. Somehow, this is the, I mean, no, it's quite a big location. Yeah, there it is, but not there. You see, it's always like, it looks like it's land, but about half of my parcel, which is what's coming off the bottom of Curtis Pond, or about a quarter of it, is swamp. My property line is right about the middle of the swamp.
So, is this it here? Is this your lane?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I own
But where do you go? Do you go, does your lane go to the
It goes to the road, yeah.
It goes to the road?
Yes. And it goes to the culvert in, they cross as Worcester, from Curtis Swamp to Curtis Pond. So I swim in Curtis Pond, across Curtis Pond, from the swimming area to the island, about, I think about 60 miles a year, restricted by weather. I really, I'm really happy that, I really want to praise the planning group for the work they do. I know you're not, you're paid, and this is the goodness of your heart, that's great. And I'm grateful for the Callas Conservation Mission and Lakes and Streams. My understanding of Curtis Pond and the other ponds in Callas is that they are already being polluted more than they can handle. We've actually done more damage to them over the years through building right up close, through faulty septic systems, through, it's already too much, right? So they're already, if you look at the area in Curtis Pond near the dam, the cove, it's called, affectionately called Corona Cove, when I came 20 years ago, you could swim right across it anywhere in that cove. Now, it's just a water lily path. It's just the only part that's open is what Don May hangs with his boat. So that's what's happening. What we're doing to the Curtis Pond, what we're doing to all the other ponds in Callas is we're destroying them through overdevelopment. We've already done that, and we can't take that back, and it doesn't make sense to say, okay, the rein's got to take up her house and plant trees there or something. That's not going to happen, we know that. But we don't want to do more to these ponds. We don't want to hurt them more than we already have. They are going to die based on the love to death, right? We're loving them to death. That's what we're doing, so let's just admit it. But let's slow it down as much as possible. And so I support the Callas Conservation Commission and their input into this, and I hope you take them seriously, and I hope you think about our love for these ponds, that we are loving them to death. That's just sort of, you know, like a little kid squeezes a puppy until it can't breathe anymore. That's what we're doing.
Wow, that's a wonderful way.
And so let's just keep that in mind and try to keep them alive for our future generations, so that my children can swim across the pond, my grandchildren hopefully can swim across the pond. I don't think so. I think in a hundred years, Curtis Pond will be a lily path place, you know? And there won't be swimming. So let's just see if we can keep it going 50 years more rather than 25 years more. So it's just like, this is for our children and for the future of Callas. This is our resource. And when we don't have Curtis Pond, and we don't have Number 10 Pond and Adamant Pond, we will have a lower economic value to our grand list and everything else. So, you know, I just think that we should love our, love our nature, and not to death, not as quickly.
Well, I'm glad to see you sort of halfway face to face. I have stood on the road and looked at your swamp and admired it and been concerned about how the drainage off of that cut that goes up toward Worcester drains right into that section. And for me, that was one of the pivotal observations that made me determine, as a member of this body, made me determine along with other people, I'm not, I'm not taking credit for it, but that was the thing, that visual input was the thing that said to me loudest of anything, that we can't let the shoreline regulations stop at the road.
Yeah, good.
And it was your swamp that made it so clear.
Cool, thank you.
Colleen?
Colleen, who lives north on Curtis Pond, to what you just said, we, a whole lot of us here have been doing loose striking and fragmenting and, that's a whole other story, but we fish game out, they came out in their busy schedule, one man, and then he came out and then picked it up, that was great. But my But Mike Wachowski, who's also a Callas resident, and he's a baseball coach and all that, and there's a, they put barbed wire as their edges, that's what fishing game does, and this barbed wire that we had been, you know, slipping over, and Arne said we need to bring clippers because someone's going to get really hurt, is there. And when they put it in, it was four feet high. That's the settlement they came down at the fishing game. I mean, to what you're saying, it was such a graphic, you know, it wasn't a bar graph, it was, it was a fence that now is this high. And that, I was blown away with that. And that it proceeded into the pond, of course, that's just what I...
Well, thank you for everything. Our next meeting and planning is October 4th. We will certainly review the conservation commission's documentation. We've had the documentation from Noreen. We've had a lot of, even before this meeting, reviews, and so we do have some issues that we're reviewing. There will be changes, I'm sure, and being humans, we don't always do things right the first time. I mean, that's all part of learning, and that's all part of living. So there will be changes, you will get notified when the changes are made. There will be a report that has to go with the changes, that documents what the changes are, and this will be printed out before it goes to the select board, but that will be, the next time you'll probably have another public hearing will be the select board's And I think that's the way the process is that we're directed to do.
Jan, on that point, I remember that at a meeting not long ago, you were talking in general terms about the timeframes for this, and you've mentioned some of them, but my specific point is now, at that time, you seem to indicate that you thought probably this revised draft that you will be in the process of making now would probably need to be done around the middle of October so that it could get to the...
It's not, yeah, I have a personal goal, but that's, I think, we know we probably aren't going to make the March date that I wanted.
I'm sorry.
I said we are probably not going to make the March date that we wanted. I look at the select board's agenda, we aren't even on it at all. I have warned the select board three times that planning commission is working through this, but if they don't get it onto their agenda, it isn't going to be done this year. I mean, it's, I have a reality check on this, it's not what I like, but I also want to say is we want to do it right. And if it takes us until the middle of November to get the final draft, then that's the way it's going to be. We're not, you know, I just have to get off of my own personal agenda. And I have a personal agenda for a variety of reasons. But anyway, that's, so don't worry, we will try to do it the right way, and if we, I don't know if we can do a, I don't know if we can pay for a special vote in June, but anyway, if it has to go to next November, so it does, you know?
But this is great, getting everybody's input. And we've been at it for years, some of you were at some of the earlier public meetings about certain sections of it, so really appreciate it.
Thank you, and with that, I guess we'll say that this public hearing is over.
Thank you.